Yep.
All right, I would like to call the Interbar Board of School Directors Public Meeting for April seventeenth, twenty twenty four to order. Uh, Ms. Caldwell, we have a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chabon. Mr. Cleaver?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Willis?
Here.
Ms. Joseph?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Fagan? Mr. Goldsboro?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Chabon?
Here. All right, Mr. Goldsboro, can we have the invocation and pledge, please?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the University of School District, and grant to this board and their deliberations this evening the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. May our deliberations be guided by the pursuit of excellence in education, ensuring the well-being of our students, and prosperity of our community. All this we seek for the betterment of education. Amen.
And let's make it to the fire of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up, we have our student reports. We have Ms. Receiver and Ms. Fair Hoops.
Good evening, everyone. At the kindergarten, the week of March fourth, the students had celebrated Read Across America, where each day they had a different theme. On March sixth, the students at the kindergarten participated in Wacky Wednesday. The students wore mismatched clothes and silly hair. On March seventh, the students at the kindergarten wore crazy socks to school. On March eighth, the students at the kindergarten participated in Cat in the Hat Day. The students wore their favorite hat to school. On March twenty first, the students at the kindergarten celebrated Rock Your Socks for Down Syndrome. The students were encouraged to wear mismatched socks.
Back from Olden School, on March fourteenth, students celebrated Pi Day by winning the chance to buy a teacher in the face. The students really enjoyed themselves. Also, on the evening of March fourteenth, Glen Olden held a family mat night from six P M. to seven thirty P M. The week of March eighteenth, we celebrated Disability Awareness Week. Each day had a different theme. On March nineteenth, our elementary students were treated by our P B I S team to a laser light show. Both students and faculty really enjoyed this show. On March twenty first, our middle school students were awarded by our P B I S team with a trip to main event. All students were very well behaved and had a great time. March twenty second was Spring Picture Day. Students came dressed in their Sunday best, and some wore their This Is Me shirt to show their awareness of those with disabilities. It was a nice, a very nice way to end an exciting week and a great way to start spring break.
At Norwood on the week of March eighteen, we celebrated Disability Awareness Week. Each day we celebrated by wearing different colors or themes. On Thursday, March twenty first, was Rock Your Socks Day, celebrating autism awareness. The school enjoyed learning more about autism and how to support children who may have this disability. Our M S P B I S team held a bingo for our students who were caught being respectful, responsible, and safe. On Thursday, March twenty first, there was a soapbox event held at the high school for all of our schools to attend. Mr. Bowen had five students present their powerful messages and did great in front of hundreds of audience members. Great job, Mr. Bowen and students. On Friday, March twenty second, Mr. McLaughlin, Mrs. Sokowalski, and Mrs. Vaughn hosted a Walkathon Polar Plo fundraiser event. This event was to help pave the way for new inclusion events and programs for the Buck Buddies Program and Norwood students. The students and teachers walked one mile around Norwood with the help of the Norwood Police and Fire Department. The walk ended at Norwood Park, where the students participated in several different polar project activities. This activity was fun for all and raised over eleven thousand dollars for the Bucks Buddies Program and Norwood students.
March was an exciting month at Prospect Park School. We started the month at our home and school bingo event. It was a huge success, thanks to all of our home and school volunteers. Eighth grade parents hosted a penny award, and the eighth grade class came out with the win. They won a pizza party for the entire grade. Our student council hosted Luck of the Irish drawing. Students won prizes donated by staff. Some examples of prizes included Dunkin', Pizza Parties, Time with Staff, or Treats. Our P B I S team hosted a laser light show for our students to reward them for demonstrating our core values of positive, productive, and proud. Our students and staff are looking forward to an eventful April at Prospect Park School.
The Tidicum March came in like a lion for the students and staff, as we began the month with our annual home and school family bingo. The sold-out crowd enjoyed playing for some amazing gift card prizes and had the opportunity to win raffle baskets made up of items including sports equipment and jerseys, food and restaurant gift cards, arts and crafts, and many other awesome prizes. Pizza and refreshments were for sale, as well as extra game tickets and raffle basket tickets. Thank you to our fabulous home and school parents for coordinating this extremely successful event. From March sixth to March eighth, Tidicum School celebrated Read Across America Week by hosting a Spirit Week in honor of reading. Students wore their favorite hats during our Hats Off to Reading Day, pajamas on Cozy Up with a Good Book Day, and finally, Black and Gold for Buddy Read Day. On March nineteenth, students Landon Richards and Abigail Diano participated in the P M E A Fan Fest at Radnor Middle School. Congratulations, Landon and Abigail, on being part of such a fantastic night of music. Our first through third grade students participated in a candy egg hunt sponsored by our student council. The students could be heard frothing on the lawn as they quickly collected the eggs. Thank you, Student Council, for such a fun afternoon for our students. Tidicum School students rocked their socks on March twenty first in support of World Down Syndrome Day. And in honor of Disability Awareness Month, our students enjoyed participating in a positivity-themed Spirit Week titled This Is Me, where they were able to celebrate teamwork, achievement, and all of their unique abilities. March went out like a lamb as we all embarked on a relaxing spring break.
March was an eventful month for the high school. A few juniors and seniors represented I H S at the Entrepreneurship Venture Showcase in early March at the University of Delaware. The students handled the Shark Tank-type situation well and made us proud. P B I S March Madness took off strong with high participation. The ninth and eleventh graders are in a close race. The winner will be announced on April fifth. Congratulations to Kylie Arnott and Aubrey Kaufman for their outstanding push during diving state championships. Kylie placed first, and Aubrey placed ninth. The school welcomed them back with a clap in. On March twelfth, guidance counselors assisted tenth and eleventh graders on a tour of Wyndham University. Students spent the day touring and learning about the history of the campus. Student Council welcomed Chi Chester for the day to exchange ideas and attend a meeting. All was successful. The I H S students worked relentlessly with Student Council to make a grand donation of seven hundred thirty-five pounds of food to Loews and Fish's Food Pantry in Prospect Park. Students and staff celebrated Disability Awareness Week with the Spirit Day during the week of three eighteen. Participation was impressive with lots of tie-dye and crazy socks. The I H S Girls Fly Football Team had their inaugural game on March nineteenth at Manor Field. It was a competitive game and resulted in a loss in the O C. On March twenty second, students prayed the stage for March of twenty twenty four. Students gathered in the high school auditorium and filled it with laughter, screams, and singing. Just about seven hundred fifty dollars was raised to put towards the Student Council Scholarship Fund. Bucks-a-thon also raised over twenty-eight thousand and five hundred dollars for Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. Our upcoming events for the month of April and May and June is Junior Prom on April twenty-sixth at the Lazaretto Ballroom in Tidicum. Senior Prom tickets start going on sale on May first. From May second to May fifth, spring youth performances of Frozen Junior. May fourth is S A T test day at the high school. May sixth to the sixteenth is A P testing. May ninth is the spring concert from seven to eight thirty P M. May twentieth is the National Honors Society Induction from six to nine P M. May twenty second is the district band and chorus concert. May twenty third is Senior Prom at the Franklin Institute in Philadelphia at seven to eleven P M. June fifth is Senior Sunset at six P M. June sixth is the senior awards ceremony at seven P M. June seventh is a senior clapout at nine A M., and June eleventh is graduation at ten A M. at South Avenue.
And that concludes our reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. All right, next up, we do not have any recognition, so Mr. Goldsboro, do you have any public comment?
Yes, we do. Uh, hi, wait. All right.
Uh, good evening, school board members. Just stopping by, wanted to thank the school board, Fernandette, the school system, and the staff for allowing us to run a basketball program this past winter. Thousand kids, boys and girls from twelve-plus communities, seven school districts, three private gyms. I have to say, Interbar is the most welcoming of all the school districts. Least amount of problems, except I probably gave Fernandette a few months' hard work.
Nothing you've had, nothing you've had.
New discipline follows amongst parents, not students. So, thank you, thank you all. And then, secondly, uh, May, of course, has been a Memorial Day. A lot of veteran programs take place. And once again, the school district is so open about that. I can't tell you the enthusiasm when the veterans see those buses pull up at the cemetery to help them plant flags on the cemetery. But they, the veterans, some of them have tears in their eyes. So, that all comes from leaderships, and thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. We also appreciate all of your support in the community as well. Getting a thousand boys, girls involved in basketball, you know, especially at the middle school level, isn't necessarily easy these days. So, keeping them off the streets, getting the, you know, dumb stuff, you know, it, it's commendable for you to do that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, no other public comments. Let's move on to motion number five. Uh, the minutes, uh, the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interbar School Board, uh, Interbar Board of School Directors held on March twentieth, twenty twenty four, be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next up, I'll pass it over to Mr. Rupio for the solicitor's report.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the public, board members, and Mrs. Riley. Um, our office this month, uh, worked on some tax assessment appeals, uh, in addition to the regular contracts that are here. And, uh, there are a couple of special ed settlements that are on as well, uh, from our special education. Uh, Solicitor Gabrielle Serene, um, actually, uh, an okay legal model. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, Mr. Goldsboro.
Uh, uh, our financial reports. So, we look at the motion seven point one that the Treasurers report for the month ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty four, be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next motion.
Motion seven point two, that motion that, uh, fund distribution, distribution, disbursements, let's try that again. Fund disbursements in the amount of eight million eighty-one thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Motion seven point three, that the budget transfers for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. All right, we have no correspondence tonight, so let's move on to number nine, committee reports.
I'll go first with the finance committee. Um, on April seventeenth, twenty twenty four, the finance committee met. I apologize, that's today. The finance committee met on April eighth at seven A M. The first, uh, item was an overview of the curriculum instruction budget, as well as the technology budget. Dr. Ekman and her team reviewed the various components of our budget and the impact that that has on our overall budget. They highlighted software enhancements to support the department on the back end. They highlighted the technology programs that will be purchased, uh, to provide support for our students in the classroom. They also presented a few positions, um, that we will have added to our budget and make the final decision once we pass the budget, uh, that could enhance the learning experience for our students. Those positions include a workforce development coordinator and two more math interventionists. Dr. Ekman then reviewed how, um, the federal grant money that we receive will be spent as well. Mr. Sonnet then highlighted his department. He highlighted some line items specifically related to security, um, on the back end, including, uh, email archiving and training for staff, um, you know, not to click on spam emails. Uh, Mr. Sonnet then also reviewed the district device lifecycle timeline. Uh, we are currently in need to replace a hundred and sixty desktop computers throughout the dis, with, throughout the district, which that is currently in the budget as well. Mr. High School then, uh, shared the, with the board, the changes from March to April, uh, for the overall budget. Overall, at a one point five percent tax increase, the deficit has been reduced to one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. This is down from, uh, down about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the previous month. The decrease is due mainly because of some windfalls in revenue. We saw an increase to local real estate taxes because of assessment adjustments and new construction. We also saw an additional five hundred thousand dollars for ready-to-learn money from the state. Uh, again, as of right now, we are in a good position, um, with the budget. We still have not budgeted any increases from the state that, you know, we're hearing, and I'm sure maybe, uh, Mr. Willis will mention, uh, that the state is negotiating right now. So, that is with status quo of state money as well. So, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar deficit at a one point five percent tax increase, um, without any budgeted, budgeted increases from the state. So, still have two months to go before we even pass the budget, but again, I think we're in, in a really good position. All right, I'll pass that over with a good segue to you, Mr. Willis, for the legislative update.
Thank you. Legislative Committee met on April the tenth at seven forty-five A M. We talked about the budget process. Um, budget hearings have been concluded with the House and Senate, appropriation committees reviewing testimonies and budget requests. Negotiations between legislature, legislators, and governor's office aim to finalize the budget by June thirtieth, which would go into effect on July first. Couple bills to watch. The, we've got House Bill two oh six three, Senate Bill eight oh one, and House Bill six six three. House Bill six six three addresses school district residency disputes, outlining conditions for disenrollment. Senate Bill eight oh one focuses on literacy achievement through structured literacy programs, though concerns exist about assessment tools and professional development time. House Bill two oh six three aims at reform educational tax credit programs to better serve students in need by adjusting eligibility criteria and administrative expenses. We also discussed charter, charter reform efforts. Efforts are underway to address charter school funding disparities with discussions on a proposed flat tuition rate for cyber schools. Basic educational funding update. Limited movement has been reported, but conditions, uh, are with concerns about delays impacting programs like extended school year and summer programs. We also discussed the two resolutions that we voted on at the last meeting. The next, oh, the last thing we need to remember is all, um, directors, there is a legislative breakfast on May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, that we're all invited to attend. The next legislative council meeting is May eighth at seven forty-five A M., and that's.
All right, thank you, Mr. Willis.
All right, Mr. Goldsboro, Delaware County Community College. Uh, nothing new to update, uh, as far as the last update that I gave, but we are meeting on April first. There's an open seat on Delaware County Community College for trustees, a trustee seat, and there are six applicants that we're going to be interviewing, uh, that evening, and then coming up with a, uh, with a recommendation after those interviews. And so, that's, I guess we'll be making that choice at that particular time.
All right. Uh, Mr. Harris, next up with Delaware County Intermediate Unit.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for showing up. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board met on April third, twenty twenty-three. Approved a contract with Discovery Education to provide annual subscriptions to Delaware County District. Approved the appointment of Mr. Bob Hornberg from Springfield School District to fulfill the term. Approved a contract with Chester Upland School District for I T assessments. Approved a contract with the following schools for computer service, services. Chester Community Charter School, Chester Upland School District, Upper Dollar School District, and William Penn School District. This is the best part. Approved the permission for twelve students and two staff members to attend the H O S A Future Health Professional International Leadership Conference in Houston, Texas. I want to go. The next meeting is Wednesday, May first, twenty twenty-four, at six forty-five. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harris. Uh, last up, uh, Mr. Evans, capital improvement.
So, um, we did have, our last construction meeting was, um, last one I attended, uh, with contractors was four eleven. We did get a high school update. There's concern over the delay in the electrical switchgear. Uh, work that's got to be done to, uh, power up the new cafeteria, as well as the new science classrooms, and some of the, uh, addition on the front side of the building. So, that said, uh, we'll talk tomorrow with the contractors and engineers about changing the phasing so that, uh, instead of moving into the new cafeteria, this is all, uh, contingent on whether or not the switchgear gets here in time. Um, if the switchgear gets here in time, we hold the schedule. Otherwise, uh, the split, the power wouldn't be available before October, which would change the phasing, so we'd move into the new cafeteria, new classrooms during the December break. Um, it only pushes the entire project by about three to four months, um, but it does change the phasing considerably, uh, at least, um, for this first year. And then, um, once we get back on track, you know, the classrooms will be shuffled as needed. Uh, we're trying to avoid, uh, any extra costs in electrical work and any extra cost in, you know, renting trailers or classrooms or anything like that off-site. So, the whole idea is to re-phase it, so it has less impact on our students and staff. All right, so, but just a heads up that it could push the entire program by three to four months, which would change the completion date from August of twenty twenty-six to about, uh, November, December of twenty twenty-six. All right, so just a heads up on that. Uh, we did postpone the, um, bid process on K to A, uh, improvements to take advantage of a grant possibility in July. So, once we write that grant and see whether or not we, um, are approved, then we can let the, uh, the bid process begin again. Uh, but we felt it was worth, uh, several dollars to the budget to go ahead and wait that out and see if, um, see if we're successful. Uh, it doesn't hurt that schedule, it's just a later start. All right, and then, um, in, in this building, uh, we, we're going to meet tomorrow to discuss some of the change orders, the cost overruns. And, um, if you've noticed, they've started replacing some of the fixed windows, the fixed painting windows with, uh, windows that open as was called for in the original contract. And other than that, uh, nothing else to talk about. Any questions? Nope.
All right, thank you, Mr. Evans.
Sure.
All right, um, at this point, uh, board representatives, if you want to leave, you can. If you want to stay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
All right, Mr. Goldsboro, next motion. Uh, for the Office of Personnel, uh, items ten point one on page two to ten point seven on page three.
Second.
I, I actually didn't make a motion, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the personnel items, um, of ten point one on to ten point seven on pages two and three.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next motion.
Uh, uh, motion, uh, eleven point one to eleven point three, a motion with regret that the following retirements be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members?
Just a quick comment. I want to thank them for all their years of service. When you look right there, thirty-eight years, twenty-four years, that's a lot of time dedicated to Interbar School District. So, I want to just thank them, um, on behalf of the board for their service to countless students, parents, and all the likes that come past through the doors with them here. So, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Goldsboro.
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion that the following items be approved. Twelve point one on page three to twelve point one four on page five.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Goldsboro.
From the Office of Special Education and People's Services, motion that the following items be approved. Thirteen point one to thirteen point five.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Goldsboro.
From the Office of Technology, motion that the following items be approved. Fourteen point one on page five to fourteen point five on page six.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Goldsboro.
From the Office of Finance, uh, motion that the following items be approved. Fifteen point one to fifteen point four.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members?
Just briefly, Mr. Chabon, uh, the fifteen point three and fifteen point four are tax assessment appeals, uh, and it's an opportunity just to, uh, just to point out that, uh, that there are dualities, uh, in, in a lot of these at times. Fifteen, uh, point zero three was a taxpayer appeal in which it was approximately a forty, thirty, thirty-eight thousand dollar reduction. The fifteen points in the fair market value after an assessment and appraisal. Fifteen point zero four is a district appeal. The district made the appeal in twenty twenty-one based on what we felt was an incorrect assessed value. The value that the Board of Assessment placed on the property was three point six million, and that value is being increased to four point one million throughout over the years. So, uh, most of the time that we are discussing tax assessment appeals, it is generally a, uh, a revenue, uh, decrease in school budget. But, uh, this board, uh, along, has, has always maintained a vigilance for its, uh, improperly assessed properties, uh, and has, uh, advised our office to keep, uh, watch on those properties along with the district's appraiser every year to see how and where, uh, you can lawfully appeal those. And there, in order to lawfully appeal a, uh, property by a district in a non-reassessment year, there are many criteria that you have to fit. It's not just a pick and choose. So, um, so this, this was a, a net plot.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rupio. And, and I was going to just mention that coming out of the, um, county-wide reassessment, we have seen way more tax appeals and, um, whatnot. So, working with the Solicitor's Office, it is great that we are getting some recoup of that money, you know, by being strategic. So, I want to thank your office for, you know, helping us, you know, do our due diligence.
Gave us guidance.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Goldsboro.
Uh, from Capital Improvement, motion that the following item be approved. That the Board of School Directors approved change order number two with the accredited environmental technologies for the additional air monitoring and environmental testing for the high school project. Additional increased cost of fifty thousand dollars to be paid from bond payments.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Ms. Fair Goldsboro.
Uh, item number seventeen, motion that the Board of School Directors approved the appointment of the following members to serve on the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors with the term of July first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. From Chi Chester, Frank Seel. From Penn Doco, Dr. Melissa Huber. From Rose Tree Media, Hillary Fletcher. From Upper Darby, Rachel Mitchell. From Wallingford Swarthmore, Rachel Holbert.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Mr. Harris.
I'd like to welcome the returning board members and the new board members.
Thank you. Alright, hearing no other questions or comments, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Next motion.
Motion number eighteen, that the Board of School Directors approve the general operating budget of the Delaware County Community College for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of ninety-two million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. Interboro School District's share is four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members?
Just a quick comment, should that read twenty twenty-four through Ju- July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-five?
It should.
Okay.
Can we?
Yeah, so let me, uh, yeah, let, can we, uh?
You can, how was your presentation? I would suggest that, uh, you just simply repeat the motion again, yes.
Admit, yeah, I'll just admit, okay. Uh, so, let me amend the motion, and, uh, the motion should read that the Board of School Directors approve the general operating budget of the Delaware County Community College for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of ninety-two million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. Interboro School District's share is four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second again.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I think it's a roll call motion.
It is a roll call motion. This, Caldwell, please, sorry, Miss Caldwell, Miss Caldwell, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Cleaver?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chivon?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. Next motion.
Sorry about that, that was my fault to not mention that it was a roll call motion. The next one is a roll call motion also. It's motion number nineteen, that the Board of School Directors approve the cost proposal from Halton Mifflin Harcourt for the H M H Science Dimensions Biology Textbooks and three-year Science Dimensions Biology Teacher Licenses at a cost of sixteen thousand, thirty-four dollars and sixty-three cents from the Ready to Learn Grant Funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, Miss Caldwell, could we please have a roll call?
Mr. Cleaver?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chivon?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Goldberg.
Motion number twenty, motion that school, Board of School Directors approve the first readings of the following policies in the categories of programs and operations.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Next motion.
Motion twenty-one, that the Board of School Directors approve the revisions of the following policies in the categories of programs, pupils, finance, and operations.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Is there any old business before the board? Any new business? Alright, Mrs. Riley, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Uh, the kindergarten academy registration for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year is underway. First orientation is scheduled for Friday, May thirty-first. There will be other orientations in July and August. Registration is by appointment only via the registration website, and we are offering evening hours on Wednesdays for our residents. Grades one through twelve registration for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year will begin on Monday, June seventeenth, by appointment only. All renters in the district are required this year to complete a residency verification, as well as all families who live with the taxpayer or consider multiple occupancy. Each year, the taxpayer, as well as the guardian, is required to attend this verification process, provide documentation, and complete the memorization form. We will have summer residency verification hours from June seventeenth through August twenty-sixth, and we will be having onsite registration at each of the individual community schools. Um, you can find all this information on our website. I'd like to congratulate, uh, John Conti, our physics teacher at Interboro High School, on being selected as recipient of the Franklin Min Federal Credit Union Foundation Excellence in Teaching Award. Each year, the Franklin Min Foundation Excellence in Teaching Award recognizes outstanding and dedicated teachers in our area. Franklin Min created this award in two thousand and seven in partnership with Delaware County Intermediate Unit. Recipients of this award receive a thousand dollars towards classroom expenses and commemorative keepsake. The recipient's school also receives a thousand dollars award. So, we're very, uh, happy to see John be recognized, and I'm looking forward to attending, uh, the banquet. I'd also like to give a shout out to Glen Olden School for achieving a hundred percent fidelity in tier one for P B I S for the second year in a row. I'd like to recognize the course team, three members are here tonight. Dr. Cabito, Ms. Lauterbin, Ms. Amanda Hoffman, they're here, so congratulations, really proud of them. Also, Mr. Stube, Ms. Alonso, and all the teachers who serve on the P B I S committee, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Riley. Any board members have any comments? Okay. Hearing none, uh, please visit Interboro School District website at W W W dot Interboro S D dot org for further information on the meetings listed below. On Monday, May sixth, twenty twenty-four, a finance committee meeting with a G B O meeting immediately following will be held virtually at seven P M. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held virtually on Monday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. The next public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held at the Interboro High School, at the Interboro High School on Wednesday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. On Tuesday, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, the Capital Improvement Committee will be held virtually at six thirty P M. Meeting is adjourned.